So let us begin the session. For this session, we're going to talk about the value conscious consumption in ESG management for sustainable future. I'm the moderator of this session from Seoul National University. My name is Song Jeyong. For this session, like I said, we're gonna talk about mainly the ESG, sustainable activities, and value conscious consumption with the members of the Global Share Members Forum. They're gonna talk about their own experiences and opinions, and what kind of research has been done by the global consumption leaders for value conscious consumption and ESG management, and listen to the ideas of our next generation. We invited three panelist members, and I'll give 10 minutes for each panelist member, and that way they have a Q and A session afterwards. So the first presentation will be made by Ms. Lee Hyunju. Please welcome with a big round of applause.
Good afternoon. I am Marketing Manager, Lee Hyunju, from Google Korea. Can you bring up my slideshow? While they pop on my screen, let me just briefly tell you what I'm going to talk about. On top of the Google Korea, I'm also working at Glosas, which is a nonprofit organization. I'm working with Mr. Lee Kyungpyul here, and I'm currently working with an organization called Sika, Social Innovation Creators Academy from Yonsei University, and we have conducted a report and survey. And today, I would like to talk about Gen Z or Generation Z's perspective regarding ESG and sustainability, and I wanted to share the findings that we had from our survey over Gen Z. So I wanted to briefly introduce you to the Glosas, but Sika, but I actually did. So let me just move on to the research questions and the methodology. The key questions we had was these: What are the unique characteristics of Generation Z? And what experiences shape them? What experiences make Generation Z, Generation Z? And secondly, how Generation Z is involved in the ESG activities? What kind of activities are they engaging in? And the third question was this: Based on this research, what kind of key lessons can we draw? These are the topical questions that we tried to solve, and the methodology that we used was these. As for the primary research methodology, we kind of conducted a survey to about 130 university students in Korea. And secondly, we looked at the news articles and academic papers to find out Generation Z's perspective. With that, I believe Generation Z is indeed a hot buzzword here. Almost every sector mentioned this Generation Z, and what we found out about Generation Z is this: They are digital natives. They're very familiar with devices, and they were born in the internet era, so they learn everything through digital means. And they are socially active. They actively participate in solving problems that they see, and they are active creators. They do not merely accept what they see, but they voluntarily create their own content to voice themselves and to speak up. And also, last but not least, they are conscious spenders. They do not just consume only because of the brand and the functionality or the feature, but through consumption, they want to prove themselves. Through consumption, they want to show who they are. These are the characteristics that we could find out through Generation Z. Then why do they have these characteristics? First, the Generation Z is suffering from the unprecedented economic hardship, economic slowdown, and the youth unemployment, and so on and so forth. And they are not the beneficiaries of the economic growth. Actually, they are suffering because of the economic slowdown. At least, that's what they believe. These are the characteristics that shape Generation Z, and they become socially active because they are not afraid of expressing their ideas and opinions. And last but not least, like I said, they are digital natives, so they are very good at utilizing social media. They search on YouTube, and they learn more from school. They learn more from social media than schools. So we believe that Generation Z is activists, active in social media as a digital native. With that, through these research, we have drawn four lessons, four key lessons. First, the Generation Z's growing interest in sustainability stems from the belief that they are the first generation suffering from the climate crisis. That is why they are actively engaging in a lot of ESG activities. And they utilize digital media in doing so. They are not afraid to speak out and with conscious spending or boycotting as opposed to boycotting. Through all these activities, Generation Z tries to prove their value with their consumption. And through these characteristics of the Generation Z, I wanted to find out the implications to business owners and the government. Since Generation Z is going to be a main consumer in the market, I believe the business should adapt to the voices of the Gen Z and accept their ideas into their business practices. That is the final conclusion that we draw. That is it from my presentation, and if you have any questions, I will come back and bring you with more details about the research. Thank you.
Ms. Lee just talked about the Glosas and the Sika's joint research and the features and ESG and sustainability conscious activities of Gen G. Then I will give the floor to Mr. Lee Kyungpyul from Kurun, CEO of Kurun.
Greetings. I am running a service for the secondhand luxury goods. For the last few years, I ran a company in this fashion industry, and my experience taught me the fashion trend changes, and let me share some ideas and thought on it. Actually, when we say the sustainability, the fashion industry is always very much closely related to this concept of sustainability because people have to wear to live, and the fashion industry has known to be one of the greatest contaminants of the earth. For example, all brands, once a year, present a fashion show, and they dispose huge amount of the clothes after the fashion show. Five or 10 years ago, maybe, that kind of fashion show was not seen as a social issue. However, recently, people recognize the importance of the sustainability, and they realize that they need to voice up against this wasteful fashion show. And that's why many brands are trying to do the online fashion show instead of offline ones, so that they are trying to be more environmentally conscious. For example, the luxury good brands usually much focus on the rarity of the brands. So if they have so much clothes in the stock or in a warehouse, they decide to bring it instead to maintain the value of the product. But recently, they changed their attitude. They knocked the door of the secondhand clothes stores so that they can be more socially responsible in terms of environment protection. So I can give you some examples of these activities. In the U.S., there is a brand called Gucci. You must know this brand. The Riair, the second brand house collaborated the Gucci because usually this kind of luxury good brands usually display their flagship product in brake and motor stores. But with this cooperation with the secondhand store, they decided to sell their products or resell their product in the secondhand house instead of just throwing them away to maintain the value of the product. And these luxury good brands actually in the past kind of turned their eyes to the environmental issues, but they are trying to be more cautious about the environment, and this kind of cooperation proves this kind of change of attitude. So that is all I have to say from the beginning. Thank you.
So Mr. Lee, the CEO of Kurun, talked about the problems caused by the fashion industry and social issues as well. And recently, the fashion industry as well, especially the luxury good brands, are trying to be more responsible for the society, he said. The final panelist member who are going to share idea is Mr. Kim Kyung-han from HGI Head of Impact Investment Division. Please, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. As was introduced, I am Kim Kyung-han from HGI. Some of you might know HGI, but some of you might not. We are an impact investment company. We pick social venture companies that tries to pursue not just financial results, but also the environmental and social results. We make investment in these types of venture companies because we believe that if these companies grow, they can make a larger impact on our economy as well. So we kind of are invited here to represent MZ, Generation MZ. I feel sorry because I am just at the very first, very end spectrum of the Generation MZ. But as a person in between the Generation MZ and the generation beforehand, I kind of see a lot of interesting perspective, both from the senior like people and the generation before us and the generation following us. So with that, I would like to share my thoughts. I thought that I can share my life stories and also the company story. I started working as a McKinsey, and there I focused on sustainability when I started working in McKinsey. It was 10 years ago when one domestic company tries to do renewable energy projects. I helped them so that they can do a better job. And I could see the what kind of transformative impact one can generate when they try to engage in eco-friendly transition and transformation. And I also wrote a report on this. And I then moved to Ethiopia and helped them establish five-year-long national plan and tried to think about how we can make agriculture sustainable based on the grant I got from the government. And coming back to Korea, I started a social venture company, and I could feel that how difficult it is to pursue both money and social values. So I decided to just give up on this social venture. So this is a failure experience of mine, which was painful. But then after that, I created IT company with my friends, and until the company was acquired. So up until recently, in one foundation, which was established by a game company, I have been running an experiment regarding creativity education for the future generation. And it has been about a year since I moved to HGI and started working on this impact investment. So looking back, I think I kind of have always been working around the theme of sustainability. So if I look at the ESG becoming a hot buzzword these days, I feel both happy, but at the same time, a little bit gloomy. The term ESG is now on everybody's lips. But deep down, I don't think a lot of companies are trying to actually deep dive into the concept of ESG. They are trying to follow the ESG because they have to win good ratings and they have to follow the capital listing market trends, but they are not truly conscious about implications, be it environmental and social, of what they do in their company. But at the same time, in contrast, the conscious spenders represented by Generation Z, they are doing a lot of things in their daily life, small things, but their individual effort does not lead amount to big enough impacts. People try to reduce the use of plastics. They try to make less waste. But then, all these individual activities, although they are good, they do not necessarily create a big enough impact. In the Generation MZ, they have jokingly say that the best way for an individual to reduce the carbon emission is not just reducing the number of flights they take on, not just using the vegan diet, but giving less birth to children. Because more population means more carbon emissions. So many entries even jokingly say that they're gonna have to adopt their children, not giving birth to children. So in this aspect, what an individual can do? If I buy a product from a conscious company, will this create a big enough impact to the world or the planet? That is why the truly conscious companies matter. In this regard, when I do consulting services with big companies, I find a glimpse of hope. As for Korea, we do have a rather unique economic structure. The owner can control quite everything. Fees comes with merits and demerits. But some of the owners I met had the capability to provide a long-term impetus behind these ESG activities and the sustainability because they are owners. I can cite an example of the photovoltaic projects that I engaged in quite several years ago. Even back in the days when the photovoltaic energy were not that lucrative, we had some owners, business owners, that they wanted to do photovoltaic energy because they are good things to do. So I do see these positive top-down trends. And given that, depending on what business owners think, this can create a overhaul, I mean, this can create a all-encompassing challenges or changes all across the company. So against this backdrop, rather than the individual activities, when companies change, we can create big enough changes and impact in our society. I don't mean to say that these individual efforts are meaningless. The conscious spending is important, and they have to voice. But what I want to say is that, at the same time, we do bottom-up activities, we do have to do top-down activities. And last but not least, I think I'm witnessing a limitation of the capitalizing market. Because of the growth, we have been neglecting environmental issues because we just wanted to grow fast. But as many of you are aware, the growth rate is slowing down because we are not a developing country. And fast growth is not just a only goal that we have to pursue anymore. And the capitalistic system that only focused and cared for the shareholders' interest is now declining. Now, the term is not shareholder capitalism, but stakeholder capitalism because many of the business stakeholders are aware that they have to care for not just shareholders' value, but stakeholders' shareholders' interests. With that, I would like to conclude here, and I will come back at the Q and A session. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we just listened to the opening remarks of the three panelist members, and I will move on to the Q and A session. I have pre-selected questions. Then I will receive some questions from the floor or from the online platform so that we can share some ideas with the audience as well. Mr. Kim, at the last part of his presentation, said that, actually, that was quite interesting. The career seeking for sustainability was your career, and you said something very provoking at the last part of your presentation. Stakeholder-based was our principle in the past, but now we are moving into the stakeholders' capitalism era. So we need to talk about the genuine principles of it. As a person who are teaching economics, I cannot agree with you more. Also, ESG is something that the companies have to embrace, so this is not an option, but a must. So that is our idea objectives from the perspective of younger generation or MZ generation. As a person working in the university, I realized that they are suffering from job loss or job shortage. So that kind of reality is there for sure. And the 26th COP meeting, COP26 meeting, just concluded a few days ago. At the meeting, leaders and the Korean government, like the Secretary General said, announced that by 2030, the carbon reduction will reach the 40% target. So that is quite an ambitious target. And the business leaders believe that that is just a pipe dream. And that will undermine the competitiveness of the companies, and more companies will go outside of Korea to overseas countries. So lower economy growth and greater job crisis will be created. So there is two difference, different, I mean, there is a gap between our idea scenario and the reality we need to face. So the value of economy and the value of economy sometimes collide. So which should be prioritized from the perspective of energy generation? This is somewhat heavy question, but I will start with this question. Mr. Kim, maybe you can go first, as you proposed this idea first?
I think that is a very important question. And when you gave me this question, I think you have, I thought you have a lot of hypothesis hidden in this question. When companies do something for environment, they can create a big impact to the company's business, and at the same time, it can create an impact to employment. But then, is it really true? That is the question I had. And secondly, as a conscious spenders, when Gen Z engage in conscious spending, do these activity actually curb the growth of the company? Do you believe this can be possible? Because only when these two hypotheses are right, your questions are valid. What do you say?
That is quite a good question. As you said, I worked as an external advisor for SK, and I believe that SK is very genuinely interested in this ESG, and the president of it actually have great interest in it. So I believe that that is possible in the long run, but in the short run, we have only nine years to go until 2030. But if you think about the structure of Korean economy, it is mostly led by the manufacturing industry. So we need to be twice, or three times more ambitious than the European nation, but we are kind of behind a schedule too much. So we want a attitude started earlier. So given that, for example, Palsco accounts for more than 10% of the carbon emission in Korea, but they don't have any technology to reduce it. So they don't have any good reduction technology. So by 2030, no one can guarantee that that kind of technology will be born. So from the perspective of industry, of course, this can be an opportunity for them, but also can be seen as an imminent threat because they simply don't have any technology, enabling technology. So given that, the only way we need to do is just close the factories. They might complain like this. So this can be seen as an opportunity, but at the same time, in the short run, this is very ambitious target. So those are threat because of absence of enabling technology. So this is just a threat from the perspective. So in the long run, I do agree that this is an opportunity, but in the short run, this is huge challenge that they need to face. And given that, one great concern is that companies might give up. I cannot do this. So I know that the CFP is saying like this, but I have no option but to switch my factory into other countries. So that is the reality, I believe. So if that's the case, from some perspective, maybe job loss will be accelerated, which is already serious in the short run for sure. So this is quite a complex problem, but from my perspective, that kind of things must be considered. Of course, from the perspective of business, we need to consider the two. For example, SK have a genuine interest in it, and they said that despite all the odds, they will go this, they will walk this path, they said. But some companies are somewhat passive because block-block will not invest in the companies that has no interest in ESG. If that's the case, those companies have no option but to reluctantly follow the pattern or the trend. So we have the mixture of the attitude. But at least from what we said, they are agree that this is a way forward for sure, whether it is voluntary or non-voluntary. So we have that kind of consensus. But nonetheless, the idea you just proposed from the perspective of company is something they don't welcome. We know that this is a way forward, but it is very questionable. It is almost seem like a mission impossible by 2030.
About what you said, I agree, but one thing I want to ask you is this. Starting from the COP and the pain points of the companies and in the decision process of the decision-making process of the company, there is no MZ generation. You have raised question about this MZ generation, but there is little pool where Generation Z can actually make an influence to the companies except for a very few leaders of the younger generation. I think we do not have a say. So we are not raising targets. Generation MZ do have a unique characteristic that we're gonna be affected by all these decisions currently being made. So we have to say that carbon reduction is the right way to go. However, at what speed and through what stage is not something that we can decide on. So when you raise this question to Gen Z, I'm confused what Gen Z can say about this, actually. But when you take a step further backward and try to see a big picture and try to see a large companies that do a good job or companies that do, countries that do a good job, we do have a good opportunity. But at the same time, I agree that we do have a big challenge. However, every situation and every sector has both opportunities and challenges. And 10 years ago, we couldn't expect that coupon or the e-commerce companies can grow this much. The same applies to IT companies. We are market economies, so those adapt and innovate can survive, and those cannot fail. And when failed companies take place, that does not mean the end of the entire ecosystem. In the employment markets, we have some of the most worshiped companies from the job seekers such as Naver, Kakao, blah, 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 and they generate a lot of jobs. From this perspective, if you look at the society through the lens of environment, using new technologies and new business models, there will be a company that can grow based on these new technologies, and our Gen Z can create new phase of growth along with that companies.
What do you think, you two panelist members? Actually, he said that there is a trade-off, and I said so. And you said that the Generation M and G are somewhat isolated in the society, but that's not the case, I believe. So if there is a trade-off, what would be the priority? And how do we need to compromise, make the compromise between the two from your perspective? Because you are the Generation M and Z. So I have this question because I really wanted what you guys have to say about this issue.
I'm sorry. What was the question again?
Summarize your question once again. What was the gist of the question? So for example, you are, as you, from your perspective, those kind of economical value sometimes conflict, make a conflict with economic value. I'm not saying that you are representing this generation, but what should be the priority between the two?
About that question, as a one person from the Gen Z, I'm not here to represent the entire generation, but if you ask for my personal opinion, I want to say that I value environmental values more. But from the economic point of view, I can say this because economically, I feel well. That is why I can say I can That is why I can say I can trade off my economic values when to value environment more. But then, when Generation Z or millennials, they suffer from the unprecedented economic slowdown and the highest unemployment rates. So they are suffering from the economic recession. In this regard, for economic stability, the Gen Generation M Z have to make choices to pursue economic stability. Even when, even when that means they have to sacrifice environmental values. I personally believe that environment comes on top of everything else. But we cannot make judgments about the people who have to make decisions about their daily lives and who have to make their ends meet. This environment issue is a broader issue. And can we plant the seed of environment issues in the people's mind when they have a livelihood issue or substance issue? I think that's gonna be difficult. So I don't say, I don't want to say that we have to deprioritize economic issues. I think it all comes down to individual situation. But what I want to say is that only when economic stability is guaranteed at least a little bit, people can start thinking about high moral um issues like environment. Above that, I want to add something. When it comes to E S G, it's environment, social and governance. I think in Korea, the soci- uh the society issue stands out the most. Because we do have a lot of structural issues that themselves society, the economic disparity, um the thing that we cannot grow our economic assets and it is very impossible, almost impossible to own a house. This is a fundamental issue that we have to face. I try to like engage in vegan diet, like several days a week, I try to spend consciously. But then that means I'm gonna have to spend more, so called green premium is there. However, if you are trying to figure out ways to survive economically, we cannot just bring out the like veganism or bring out the idea of veganism and bring out eco friendly way of living. So when we ask Generation M Z, what do you value more, environment or economy? Before that, I have, we have to ask, are you in a situation where you can think about high like ground values and principles? And I think frankly speaking, we cannot do that. We have like economic disparity getting deeper and deeper. I myself am from a like fortunate class, I met good parents. I can think about the vision, I can think about the ambitious goals and targets. And that is because I am in such an environment. And if I was not in the environment where I am in, I think I wouldn't be able to talk about environment issues. So before I think Gen G, but if you value environment or economy, I think we have to focus on leveling the playing ground in the first place. After solving that, we have to ask questions, whether you value more economy or environment.
So I think we're getting to the essence more and more. Because E S G, E S G are comprised of three elements, not just E. Of course, we are very much focusing on E this it is. But in this twenty first century of knowledge based society or globalization society, we are seeing greater and greater polarization. And this social polarization is so serious issue. So we need to also pay necessary attention to the second ladder as I fully agree with it. So that is somewhat heavier question we need to throw ourselves. So let me move on to the second question then. The second question goes to Mister Lee, this this is so so much relevant to you as well. From the perspective of Generation M and Z, you share some outcome of the survey. So they are very much active in value conscious consumption, which is very proper. But the problem is that this generation has very shallow pocket. So the price is very important factor for them. Just because they don't have money, although they want to be more sustainable, they are kind of enforced to buy less expensive but less environmentally friendly ones. The question is they, whether they can afford the environmentally friendly products. In case of the U S younger generation, they have great interest in sustainable passion. And if they don't have any money, they go to deport or push market, the second hand market application instead. However, still, price is critical factor. Zara could be their common choice just because they don't have enough money. And in case of sustainable fashion brands, because of the COVID nineteen, many people are doing online shopping, so the return rate soared. So in some cases, it takes so much money because of the return, high return rate. So they decided to just throw them away instead of reclassifying and resorting them out. So I'm questioning whether it is sustainable. Korea, when compared to the U S, has lower interest in sus- uh sustainable fashion, I believe, relatively, I believe. However, uh we are seeing greater and greater interest from the Generation M and Z. So I believe the ratio of sustainable fashion in Korea will grow in the future. But if you see this kind of issues in the U S, how do we, what do we need to do not to repeat the same mistake in Korea? So maybe you are working in the fashion industry, so you can answer. That is quite a good question, I believe. Actually, there are many fashion brands who are very sustainability cautious. So most brands are trying to use the waste plastic to create a recycled clothes or from the production to the distribution. They are trying to decarbonize the whole processes in, by adopting many technologies. Like the two panelist members said, actually, this is not a problem of the society, but a more related to the problem of personal choice because they need to purchase with green premium. And some fashion brand take advantage of it by creating some more expensive products without doing any environmentally conscious activity. This is called the green washing phenomenon. At the same time, like you said, because many people are doing online shopping, return rate increased. And the fashion industry, of course, in case of top designer brand can, are capable of recycling of it. However, uh lower, I mean last uh prestigious brands cannot afford it. Because people usually think that they can just get the returned product and recycle it. But instead of doing that, they just throw it away because it is less costly. So when we see the fashion brand industry, they are going to the sustainable direction and I fully agree with it. And actually, I very much interested in it and I read a lot of articles and papers on it. But in order to solve the environmental problem at the fundamental level, instead of consuming that kind of sustainable branding, the consumption level itself has to be curved. That is more sustainable way of consumption, I believe. And like I said, in case of Korea, when compared to the U S or other country, still have low awareness of the sustainability. Nonetheless, in any cases, E S G governance or sustainability are the somewhat unfamiliar concept, but we are you kind of grown, growing on it. So that kind of movement will grow at some point. So until we see the momentum of it, we will see some small group of people or small number of people who are doing in this field. And it will create a huge roughly, roughly effect across the society at the end. So like I said, even in the U S, younger generation, because of the financial hardship, cannot afford to buy the product or they instead go to the second hand store shop. Or if they, if even if they, if they cannot afford the second hand shop, even they decided to buy the fast fashion industry. However, still, the key here is to lower the consumption itself from the beginning. Miss Lee just said that Glozas and Sika did a joint research and the outcome of the research was very interesting. And given that, what kind of comment you can give on this issue?
If I can add on what Mister Lee said, based on the research findings, like the professor mentioned, Gen Z generation do want to make a value conscious spending, but they do not have a lot of money, so they do have limitations. This is in line with what we have found out through the survey. However, if there is sustainable choice given to Gen Z or if we ask Generation Z, which are, which you are going to choose over the brand with good name, brand with good function and brand with good social value. And we do see a clear tendency that they want to prioritize brand with good social value. But the thing is that we do have an economic um issue. And also, I think we have to think of what kind of value Gen Z is willing to spend on by using Tumblr, for example. I'm just, am I displaying eco friendly value? Or am I just showing off myself as a socially conscious person? I think I have to think about this issue as well. Because a lot of companies do engage in diverse eco friendly activities and actually engaging a lot of greenwashing marketing activities. They just put eco bags and tumblers into the market and make delude consumers feel proud of themselves by buying these so called eco friendly products. However, are they truly for sustainable future or are they just for showing off? I think we have to draw a clear line between these two. And as was mentioned by Mister Lee, fashion takes up ten percent of the emission. So it is a polluting industry and the situation is getting worse and worse. When it comes to sustainable fashion, it comes with green premium indeed. And when people like clothes and like fashion, they can just buy on and on and on. So like Mister Lee mentioned, I think reducing consumption itself should be the first principle that we have to take. Rather than buying eco friendly manner, taking a step back, not buying at all should be our number one choice. I think that is the direction that we have to go when it comes to Gen Z going forward.
Thank you. Mister Kim, do you have any additional comment on it?
When we ask question Gen Z, the answer gets trigger, trigger, gets trigger and trigger because Gen Z has a limited like impact to the entire spending. And the next session, I believe, we're gonna have some political like dialogue because we are gonna have political like panelists. I think we have to have younger population in a leadership that creates social consensus. That is the way we can make meaningful changes. For example, Uniqlo's are or H and M and they are the most representative fast fashion companies, right? To um curb our consumption in these brands through like meetings like COP, like twenty six, for example. We charge them for carbon footprint, we charge them for like movement. This might double the price of the clothes, let's begin with that hypothesis. As a group of community, some might say that, I don't, I don't know, I just want to enjoy cheaper clothes and think about the future. In the meantime, and I think the more people we have in the social consensus deciding group where people think about future is gonna change the entire picture. But the thing is that we do, we have a clear line between the decision making people and the people who are gonna be affected by this decision made by some people else. We do have to have a clear consensus about this is the ten year roadmap and let's go this way. And that means I do, I mean real social consensus. And to make sure that we move in one direction, we have to invite more young people to take part in making decisions. Thank you for this good question. I believe this is from the online questions or onsite questions, I don't know. But reducing consumption, is it possible? If we reduce consumption, doesn't it lead to another problem? That is a rebut I got from the floor.
So there could be many opinions on this issue, I believe. Also, Mister Kim just said that fundamentally, the Generation M and Z need to uh interpretate, uh interpret in an active manner the decision made by the top instead of just receiving it. So I'll move on to the next question then. This might be a very sensitive question. So like I said, this new generation born between nineteen eighty one to two thousand five are suffering from polarization and the rising price of houses or stock prices. So they feel like that they are isolated from the society. And they are trying to use all the resources and means to do the speculation in coin market. And actually, digital currency market because of that are ve- very much led by the young generation. So this high rise, skyrocketing price of houses, commodities are kind of forced the younger generation to do such speculation because they have no other option to, but to accumulate asset. But from the perspective of environment, since we're talking about the sustainability, this kind of digital currency are mined by using huge amount of computing power and servers. And that means a huge consumption of power electricity. So some people even argue that mining are environmentally destructive. So this is my personal curiosity, actually. So from the perspective of younger generation, who are very much interested in the digital currency and mining of it and investment, investment relating to it, what do you think about that? Do they share some concerns in this issue? And a few days ago, actually, I saw very interesting article, news article. B T S representing, representative of the Korean K-pop artist and Hive decided to non-fungur item, moving to the N F I fields to create some commercial merchant for fans. And it was heavily criticized by the fans because V T S was known for the environmental ambassador. But because of this investment, investment, they are showing less environmentally conscious move. So that kind of merchant, merchant and merchandization of B T S are being criticized by fans around the world. And some people even said that we need to boycott the product made by Hive. So I think this is somewhat very much relevant issue. So what do we need to see, how how do we need to think about this issue and what should be the take of you? Maybe from you first?
It's all good firsts about the cryptocurrency. I think the story is about only a few from the Gen Z. After COVID nineteen, I do see an increase in participation in cryptocurrency market and the virtual asset. Like around me, I do have friends who constantly talk about like stock market and Bitcoin and so on and so forth. But the question was more about the economic, I mean environmental implication of the cryptocurrency, right? And if we share the consensus or the awareness about this issue among in Gen Z. And I do believe that we have an understanding about this implication, then still, why the fuss? If you ask me, because I think I have to say, because of the economic like reality and situation. The parent's money means my money and my economic class. And becoming rich on my own, own has become nearly impossible in the current society that we live in. So the speculative asset, win or lose assets such as Bitcoin, cryptocurrency means a way for Gen Z to secure economic stability. That is why they see an increase in the Gen Z participation in this area. So in a short run, because of the economic interests, they do have a turn blind eye to the long term environmental implication of the Gen Z, if I can dare say. And about the B T S and N F T. I've actually saw the news. The B T S went to U N, delivered a speech. But then Hive recently decided to merchandise the N F T of B T S items. And the fans said that we're gonna have to boycott Hive. I saw a lot of tweets about this and arguing Hive, that Hive should stop abusing B T S. It's ironic. But then I think this is one way of Gen Z expressing their ideas and opinions. About Hive's decision on N F T, I don't think I'm gonna, I can judge if the decision was good or bad because Hive has shareholders to take care of and they utilize their like product.
because Hive has shareholders to take care of and they utilize their like products. They utilize the BTS that they had. So it was a natural decision. And about the fans' reaction though, I think the reaction was also natural reaction to make. Utilizing COP twenty-six, K-pop for a planet platform was made by one of my Indonesian friends. This is a platform where K-pop fans can gather together to talk about the seriousness of the climate change issue so that they can provide like impetus through their like agencies, through the K-pop artists' agencies. So that they can reduce carbon footprint when they do events. Indeed, the Coldplay concert that is coming up soon, they are going to try to make it net zero. So in the concert stadium, many of the items will be made out of recyclable items and so on and so forth. And with this platform being created, naturally, this will mean a drive or another push to K-pop artists' agencies. And these agencies do have to care for these fans' needs because fans are their stakeholders, right? And if BTS, BTS is known for their huge number of fans, fandom, right? And if the fandom is that huge, they're gonna eventually have to listen to the ideas of fans. But then I think this is two different tracks of the fans and the business companies. So I had this two different opinions about this. Okay, then what about you, Mr. Kim? Any thoughts?
The perspective toward blockchain, through market, through media, we relate this issue with speculation. However, the beginning of the blockchain was about G governance. That was why the Bitcoin actually began in the first place because we wanted decentralization. We wanted to escape out of the world where like big agents control everything in a very central manner. Many got dubious about this and wanted to declare decentralization and utilize a lot of application based on Bitcoin so that they can vote and make decisions in a fair and square manner. And as a side effect, the coin market and the capital market got linked together. And this led to the creation of a very unique or peculiar like capital market. Then how to view this? The Gen Z generation do wanted to say no to the existing unfair system. But then this system met the existing market and created this unique like system. And like you mentioned, this Bitcoin is creating side effects because this is being used as a means to earn windfall. However, suppose that this Bitcoin is used in a very healthy environment where everybody can have their fair share and do have a chance to grow economically. And in this society, I think Bitcoin could have grown into a way better phenomenon. So I think here I want to once again get down to the fundamentals of this issue. The blockchain like creating carbon emissions and so on and so forth, let's forget about this issue. Why Bitcoin is creating issue and why Bitcoin is making people to participate in? And I think we have to think about this issue and how, what we can do to change this situation. Bitcoin or not, this is a very difficult question to answer because we have a lot of like stakes at, um, a lot of things at stake here. Because of the reality, sometimes we cannot make right decisions even when we know that is right decision to make. But should we just curse them or blame them? No. So from the society, we have to think about how we can drive people to move toward right direction, encourage them to right direction. That is going to be a healthier discussion to make. Thank you.
Okay, and I think this is good time to receive questions from the floor and from the online platform. And let me deliver some questions and talk about those questions before we finish the session. Among the questions we received, one, people said that we are doing voluntary ESG activities. And for the sustainable ESG, what should be the role of the government? Who will answer to this question? Mr. Lee, uh, Ms. Lee?
If I can begin, I bet many, like we have other panelists with greater opinions, so I will begin first. During this research, I felt a lot of things. And one of them is that we do not have a standardized standard or principle when it comes to ESG. Many like bodies, international organizations do mention ESG. But we do not have one like appraising criteria, assessing criteria that everybody can agree on. Once again, drawing lessons from our research, we kind of delve into example where Ootuki, the company, is now praised as God Duki, which is the combination of God and Ootuki. And we track the ESG rating of this company in the process of Ootuki being praised and also another negative company called Nam Young being boycotted. And in the process of Ootuki making a lot of social contributions and giving like positive impressions toward people. And they did have lower ESG rating than compared to Nam Young, which is being boycotted by people. So I wanted to find out why this ESG rating is like fat. Given, let alone E, what about S and G? These S and G relates to social issues that are publicly discussed and openly discussed. Then why Nam Young's ESG rating is not that low, given all the criticism in the society? I'm not from the research organization, so we couldn't deeply dive into the reason behind this. So in the long term, what I want to say is this. Be it company or be it diverse organizations, we have to create a standard regarding ESG that everybody can relate to and agree on. Thank you.
Mr. Yegunku, what do you think as you run a company, actually, what should be the role of the government? Actually, ESG management has been much talked maybe from the beginning of last year. And that kind of quantitative should be qualitative, I mean qualitative, should be qualitative. Because you just talked about the example of Ootuki company. So the social impact from the perspective of the company and from the perspective of the public could be very different. And that kind of gap must be quantified to close the gap in a proper manner. That should be the key. And also, Mr. Kim, what do you think about this issue?
I also would like to be brief. Personally, I think the government should not try to set a growth agenda at the government level. If you look at the previous governments, they talked about like creative economy, green economy and so on and so forth. They want to frame an economic growth agenda, but the growth is made by companies, actually. So we have to think about what we can do to help companies do well in the global forum and global arena. And in the process of transition, some might lose and some might left out, right? And we have to create a social safety at the government level to support them to get back on track. I don't want government to try to outpace the market. Because Korean companies are good, they are smart, they adapt to the changing market trends. And in the course of doing so, they might suffer some of the challenges or sufferings. And the government should, government rule, role is to provide support to this. So I hope the government can take a step back.
So I, I think we have additional question, but I don't see on this display, I think. So they are trying to bring up the question on the display. Do you have any question from the audience, actually? So I think it takes some time to type the question. Do you have any question from the floor, actually? Anyone from the floor? Can you deliver the microphone to the one who raised the hand? Can I just say? So Generation M and Z are called younger generation from my generation, older generation. And think they have their own universe, somewhat different from my universe, our universe. My generation lived in the time of deficiency. So we worked harder to develop something and to create something out of nothing. And I think we're enjoying the benefit we created, so kind, this is seen as a reward. However, Generation M and Z was born in the place where is, there is a lack deficiency. And they are trying, trying to change our society to a proper manners. And that is something that should be complimented, I believe, from my perspective. Like the Google manager said, Ootuki becomes a exemplary company. But Nam Young becomes a bad example because of poor management. But I believe that that kind of behaviors were very much related to the revenue outcome of each company. So younger generation can influence like that. And what kind of things they need to say to the older generation? What kind of changes they need to propose to the older generation? That is somewhat difficult question, so what kind of answer you can give? Mr. Kim first?
We do have a lot of things to say to our older generation. We cannot like assess or deny the economic achievements made from the previous generation. But how the results are distributed and what kind of opportunities are given to young generation, that is our concern. I think many would agree if I say this. Stop holding or stop grasping over the household, like real estate assets. If you go back to the nineteen eighties, may you enter like large company, you earn money, but at the same time you loan some money from the bank. And if you like spend some years, you can buy a house in Seoul or somewhere else. But this is not an area where younger generation can approach. But ironically, this is the money from the, our previous generations' money. But this previous generation that owned money, inherit their money to their siblings. And those who didn't have, who do not have rich parents, do not have a leeway into this existing asset like market and their hold into the money. And the cry out from the Gen Z's for equality or fairness is because they do not see that they have a way into the like small circle of elites or small circle of power. We have to think about growing the fruits, growing the pie, of course. However, we have to think about fairly sharing or distributing the pie. We think about like our future being gloomy and looking dark. And maybe we, I have to stick all my money into the Bitcoin. And if one thing goes wrong, we just give up everything, right? So my question to the previous generation is how far you can concede, how far you can yield to future generation for the sake of their happiness, not yours. So in this regard, I like save money. I bought an office, um, office till, like ten, like Pyeongguk sized like flat house. I, and I can earn nine hundred thousand won per month for renting this small house. And I did some math, my original cost of this maintaining this small spot was three hundred fifty thousand won. So starting from this year, I am currently renting out my place for only a three hundred fifty thousand won, which is significantly lower than the market price. And I am happy that a good group of youngsters are utilizing my place very well. So I think we have to decide how much we can yield because if we just hold grave over what we have at this like future cycle will go on and on and on. We do have elites like group who hold a lot of things. When they think about how much they can yield and give up for future generation, then we can start thinking about the fair ground. Thank you. Any other additional comments? We have five more minutes to go.
Uh, if I can comment on that, you mentioned about the process of Ootuki becoming, being praised as God Duki and Nam Young's doing still good in the market means that our activity does not lead to big impacts in like their financial balance sheets. But then actually, that is not true. In Generation M Z, Ootuki is top three companies that our young generation want to join. And as for Nam Young, we are boycotting and this, a lot of issues and a lot of stink handles, their stock price is plummeted. So we do have economic indicators that reflect all this, our perspectives regarding this. But from the ESG perspective, what I wanted to say is that these economic indicators are not getting reflected into the ESG metrics that we have. And I thought maybe the government can do something to create a more like transparent board where we can see this. That was my point. Thank you.
We have three or four minutes left, so I think this should be the final question. So purchasing power must be enhanced for efficient use of value-conscious consumption. So how we can resolve this dilemma? So that is our final question, I believe. Maybe, Mr. Lee, you can answer to this question. To begin with, so I'm not sure what kind of consumer group you're talking about because it will change the dynamic. But from my perspective, of course, when we talk about the general manufacturer of the product, the value or utility of the product should be considered. If it functions well, that kind of additional value can be very adventurous. And I mean very, could be advantage. But in case of high-end goods, the purchasing power must be acquired first. Of course, the question here is that what kind of management plan each company have? But nonetheless, I believe that the value consumption is somewhat prioritized by the purchasing power, by some people. And I think this is not a problem of polarization. So if you genuinely believe that the quality of the product can be compromised or sacrificed, so this is a problem of personal choice, I believe. So I think we need to wrap up session here. So we talked about the sustainable future and value-conscious consumption and ESG. Clever, cheapest Generation M Z were represented by these three outstanding panelist members. And we had a very interesting discussion. I said interesting, but still, it is very tricky and difficult issue faced by the Generation M and Z. Still, they, uh, most of them have very difficult, I mean, financial hardship and suffering from polarization. Of course, we can ignore the value of economy. And at the same time, ESG, environment and social values must be all respected at the same time. But that kind of decision are, to be, truth or be told, are not made by Generation M and Z, but by older generation. So the question is how to reflect the voice of the Generation M and Z to this kind of decisions and decision-making processes? So this could be the structural issue, I believe. So I believe that the topic of today is very relevant, but not an easy topic, so I realize once again. So I think we need to create more discussion venue like this so that we can have a hard-to-hard talks. So that what kind of trade-off should be made when many interests are conflicting to each other? Especially our next generation, their voices must be more reflected on these decisions. Because their generation, when compared to my generation, need to gain uh more priorities. And they need to speak up in these issues. So I hope that this session could be very helpful to that end. And I think we need to close the session here. Thank you so much for your presentation, three panelist member. Why don't we give a, why don't we wrap up the session here? Thank you so much for your contribution.